Nice to see such a good crowd of citizens here today to welcome our newest board member, Kathy Swannhall.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
In unprecedented governmental fashion, we were able to come to consensus in a brief meeting this morning and name her to replace Jack until the November elections. We're just glad to have you on board.
Thank you very much.
All righty, next item of business is the approval of the consent agenda. What are your desires, ladies and gentlemen?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second? Motion duly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. So ordered. At this point, we will open the floor to public comments. If any citizen would like to address the board, please come forward and announce your name and address, and then Betty will put the timer on you.
Hello, my name's John Galloway. My address is 40 Oyster Cove Landing in Hartfield. And the reason I'm here today to speak to you is with the request of Mr. Koontz, who's also helping us out. I live in Coates at Wilton Creek neighborhood along with Mr. Koontz, and there's a proposal, I believe, will be brought forward today as part of Mr. Walker's package to make some changes to the county animal control ordinance to add an Article VI that would prohibit dogs running at large within our Cove's community. It's essentially identical to the existing Article IV that covers Piankatank Shores community. And we submitted a petition within the neighborhood to Mr. Koontz to bring this request before the board today. So, a little bit of background on this, I know the issue of dogs running free, leash laws, all that could be controversial in rural counties because it's just kind of against the nature of the county, but what I'd like to point out is the Coates at Wilton Creek is different from a lot of the other areas within Middlesex. It's a private planned community. We've got 62 condominiums, 46 houses currently there. It's much more of a suburban-type environment than a typical rural environment that you'd see in Middlesex. Very natural setting, lots of trees, ponds. It's very suitable for taking long walks, jogging, biking, and so on. But we've had some problems over the last few years, maybe probably longer, certainly since I've been in there, with dogs that have been running at loose within the community, harassing people that are out walking, attacking people and pets from time to time. And it's interesting because we actually have a covenant within the community that prohibits dogs from being off their property and off-leash. Unfortunately, there is a small number of residents in the community that seem to ignore this on a regular occasion. And, you know, we have had people physically attacked and dogs attacked by some of these animals. Under Virginia law, the fines for covenant violations in an HOA are limited to only $50, so it's not much of an incentive to make people play well in the community. So, I have 30 seconds left. So, I'd just like to point out, I had one of my dogs was attacked viciously a couple of years ago. County Animal Control was very helpful in resolving that issue, but we've had other cases where we continue to be harassed. I had a neighbor's dog that ended up in our backyard two months ago threatening my two dogs again on my own property. And, you know, it's just, it's time that something can be done to fix this. Our HOA, like I said, they're kind of limited in what they can do, and looking at the county animal control ordinance, I see that Piankatank Shores has a protection for dogs running at large within the community. We'd like to ask to have the same type of article, essentially identical article, applied to Coates at Wilton Creek. So that's the petition, that's the proposal before you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Harold Muller. I live at 1939 Remnick Drive. The reason I'm before you today is that I want to object to the school board budget. And as most of you know, a short time back, a presentation was made by a consultant on a salary change for our school board. I was at that presentation, and during the presentation, I just felt something was absolutely wrong with the matrix that was being used for the study that the consultant had done. In that matrix, they were comparing York County, which has 5,000 students, Gloucester County, which has 2,500 students, and it just didn't seem right to me. It wasn't using the Olympic method of analysis, which throws out the highs and lows. So my wife and I started to look at the studies. We went and did research with the Governor's Council on Education, also with the Department of Education, and found that a system of evaluating schools was set up by Virginia Commonwealth University and to develop a set of like-school divisions for comparison to do a study. These are called clusters. Our Middlesex Schools study did not use a cluster theory at all. I met with Dr. Gretz and I met with Mr. Goforth and presented our findings to them. I asked, the first thing I asked Dr. Gretz was, "How many positions haven't you been able to fill during your tenure here?" He said, "We fill all of them except a technological director." He said, "But we've lost two students, or two teachers." That's a 2.6 percent attrition rate. But he also said, "One of the teachers that went to a much higher-paying area wants to come back, and I'll take her back at the first opening that I have." So now we're down to a 1.3 percent attrition rate. Our study looked at a comparison of others' like schools that were in a cluster group, and we found that Essex in 2017 had done a study on salaries. We also found that Middlesex was the lowest-paid school system within that cluster group. They were at the very bottom. That doesn't seem right for what we have in this county. So I'm not opposed to a raise for our schoolteachers by any shakes, but I wanted to be a reasonable increase for them. So we looked at the other schools, we looked at the demographics of the counties that it made up, and where their rankings were as far as the quality of student that they were putting out, and we looked at, we used SchoolDiggers.com, which is a national organization that evaluates all schools. I'm sorry, I'll conclude in just one second. And SchoolDiggers.com put our high school at above the 50 percentile, but our elementary school at way below the 50 percentile in performance. Kinga Queen County students rank at the 90th percentile. They're the highest-paid teachers, too. If we were at the 90th percentile, I would say pay our teachers as much as we can, bring them up to that. But I think if every one of you went into a restaurant and you said, "Give me a steak," and they brought you out a hamburger, you certainly wouldn't pay for a steak. Our study said that we could give a raise to the teachers by increasing our tax base by $332,000. That would give $3,500 on average to every teacher that did not look at the administrative staff. And I'm going to tell you, $3,500 is not crumbs. It's quite a bit of money. We also shrank the steps down from 35 to 30. So it was a very significant raise. If our teachers present students that are at the 90 percentile, let's pay them accordingly. But let's not pay for something that we're not getting. We have too many other needs in this county that need to be addressed. Thank you, and I'm sorry for running over.
Thank you, Hal. And I would like to publicly thank that citizen group that not just found fault with what we're trying to do, they tried to find solutions for us, and we appreciate that. Next speaker.
I understand about the teacher's salary, but I believe that's either a nine- or a 10-month contract. And the Sheriff's Department here has people that are making less than that, and there's a $10,000 difference between a starting, not there, but the Sheriff's Department, it keeps losing people to the state police because they get $10,000 more. And they get shot at and run over, and they have issues like that. And so, we kind of need to do a few other things, and I'm not looking to raise our rates where we can't afford to pay our taxes. But I really would like you all to consider, the difference is that they're not being shot at, they work fewer months of the year, and I think the Sheriff's Department really needs something else to go with what he's getting. They tried to get it from the state, and they were unable to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. I'm John Farrenholdt from Hartfield, Virginia. I'm here once again to discuss the boat tax issue that we have in the county, especially to our newest board member, so that she's aware of what is taking place in the county. We continue to have our larger and more expensive boats leave the county due to the taxes that are being applied to them here in the county versus the other counties surrounding us that do not have boat tax or have eliminated the boat tax. It is a serious and real problem. It affects not only the marine industry, the recreational industry, our restaurants, our local businesses throughout the county. You know, Middlesex is a peninsula, we have water on all of our sides, and it is very, very important that we continue to study the boat tax issue seriously here amongst yourselves and really take a fresh look at what we can do to revise the marine industry, the waterfront. I reiterated last time that it is having effect on the property values in the county, which is evidence, and the other counties that surround us that have ample waterfront property, those values and assessed values are increasing. For Middlesex, we're flat or negative. So it's a serious issue, one that we need to continue to study, and I and others will look forward to speaking to you. And if any of you have any questions, please feel free to reach out and talk to us. Again, this is something we need to really, really think about and make a change. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else going on? Seeing none, we will close the public comment period and move into reports from constitutional officers. We have report-only from the Treasurer of Pages 42 through 44 in your packet. I believe the sheriff wants to talk to us about some vehicle leases and budget transfer requests. Is that correct, Sheriff? Please come forward.
Thank you. Good afternoon. During our budget meetings, I announced that Chevrolet Caprices will no longer be a package for us next year. One of the dealers that we deal with for purchasing our cars has three extra cars that is left. The new vehicles are going to cost a little bit more, I think around $5,000 to $7,000 more in the future for the police package. So, looking at what I had left in my budget and then getting suggestions from Matt Walker, we came up with, I have $25,000 on my purchase vehicle line left for the year. We could pick up these three vehicles, which will save us money over the next year, and lease them, but to get the third vehicle, I need a budget request for $10,541. I think it's going to be, it would be a good program to have it and get it now because the next set of vehicles are going to cost us more. And this is the last of the Caprices, and if we say yes, I can secure those vehicles as early as today. So I'm requesting for $10,541. And as always, when asset forfeiture money comes in that we have still due from Homeland Security, we will pay these leases off like we did last time for the citizens so they don't have to pay the whole brunt of it. We've done that in the past, and we will stick to that.
Sheriff, because I understand that this is a three-year lease to own, and at the end of three years, a dollar on the vehicles belong to the...
Correct. We lease three years, and then the fourth year, we pay a dollar for the vehicle.
If we had the cash, do you know what the difference is that we're paying for the privilege of a three-year lease to own versus just paying outright? In fact, if you don't, that's okay, it's just a curiosity.
There is no difference under this program. We fall under Virginia Beach's procurement.
Okay, great.
So, we jumped in under theirs, they have a large fleet, and we are able to get these vehicles at a much lower price.
Right.
And to Monica, thank you for helping on the sheriff's office, but the board is already doing that, they're looking at the sheriff's salaries, and we're trying to get it up.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to add a vote of support on this, or a motion of support on this, because as I mentioned in our budget work session this morning, by going ahead and moving forward with these leased vehicles, we're freeing up some much-needed room in next year's budget. And as I presented this morning in the budget work session, having these vehicles come onboard now as opposed to buying them new next year gives us a little bit of flexibility in the Sheriff's Department budget to do some other things, including some salary adjustments.
Right, which we're working on. And I am going to go ahead and, the slots that I have, I'm going to offer the positions. We've had a vacancy with one of our dispatchers, and we talked about bringing, making an offer so we don't lose the two that are getting ready to walk on us because we're paying so low. But we came up, I think it was around 29, 999 or something like that, I think you had met. So I'm going to make that offer to them this week, and hopefully they'll take that. It's still, the other counties are still between 32,000 and 34,000 for starting dispatchers, but that's much better than when we were starting at 24, so we're doing, we're making progress.
Well, General folks, I believe the sheriff is looking for a motion on FFI 2018-3.
I'll make a motion, a budget transfer for $35,000 of $41.
Second? Motion duly seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, so ordered.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the, well, good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before we let our sheriff leave the room, I think, I speak
for staff and the emergency services in the county that want to commend him and his group. They worked some tireless hours over this last week, and, well, just did an outstanding job with the investigation and the rapid solution to what was a very horrible event.
It was long. I tell you, it was three days, and it turned out, it didn't turn out the way I was hoping it turned out, and every sheriff wants to, when a citizen is taken like that, we really want to bring the citizen back home. And we couldn't get there fast enough, but we did our best. And we brought closure. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. All right, moving on to agency and staff reports. I think I see Ron Peaks out there, maybe he wants to talk to us about Virginia Department of Transportation. Almost got that new roof on, I see.
Getting closer and closer, may. That's what the chairman, the board members, staff, and general public, and we are keeping our fingers crossed for that because we miss Saluda. We really do. Just very briefly today, the report, apologize, Joyce was called away and couldn't make it today. One of the, I guess, the event for us was what we call in the district a rain event, but of course it turned out to be kind of like a wind event, starting on Friday, and that kept us quite entertained, as I'm sure it did a lot of the residents with power in and out and those sorts of things. But I think we, I think we cleared somewhere close to 60, 60 trees during the day on Friday, some Friday night, and then into Saturday, we did, I'm calling some, a few contractors, about four two-man tree cut-and-toss contractors to help us out. And then, of course, we have a wreck on the, have an incident on the Norris Bridge, and we had to be involved in that as well to barricade, set signs up for the closure until such time as the wind got below 39 miles an hour sustained and less than 50 gusts for a 30-minute period of time. Then we were able to get that vehicle off the bridge. Some of the other work during the past month, we have been doing some ditch cleaning, and mostly in the middle portion of the county right now. I think that included Route 620, 623, 624, 628, 663. It's been a big month of potholes, too, as a recovery from the January weather that we had with the snow and the freezing. And I think we were up close to 100 on the potholes for the month, and still trying to keep working on those because it's that time of year. We've also had a lemon contractor in the county on some of the secondary roads, and we were also able to clean and repair a cross pipe on westbound 33 there, Stormont Road. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that's enough for today, for me. Any questions?
I certainly appreciate that black material that I've been finding in the potholes on 33, to do things out. You're all doing a good job.
Thank you very much.
Could I, Ron, I just wanted to call to your attention, a constituent called me last night and said there's a tree overhanging on Stormont Road, right where My Lady's Swamp crosses under.
Stormont?
Stormont Road. I don't know if you can pull it down before it comes down or what you'd do in that situation, but if you could have somebody take a look before we have an incident, I'd appreciate it.
What was that location, I'm sorry?
It says on the map My Lady's Swamp. It's the only little tributary into the county from that area.
The guys will know.
I think so.
The guys will know. And of course, we will, I'll have somebody take a look at that pretty quick. And sometimes we run into difficulties when the trees themselves are on private property and that sort of thing, but we'll certainly take a look.
Thank you.
And I would like to thank you wholeheartedly for the light at Cook's Corner.
Yes, I forgot to mention, we do have the blinking yellow that has been installed.
I thank you because that will save me in the future. I've almost turned there wrongly twice.
Ah, very good. You're welcome. I mentioned briefly that again, that that's a new rig. A lot of people think these things are simple, it's sitting an electrician out there with a little blinker device to put on the light and make it start blinking. That is not the case. These are, these are extremely high-tech. These devices, the lights, are meant to last like 20 years, and Saluda was the first county in our residency to receive the blinking left turn, so, very good, thank you.
Thank you. Ron, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, ladies.
Next item on the agenda is school matters. I see we've got one member of the school board here. Is there anybody that wants to address the board supervisor?
I apologize for Dr. Gretz, he's a new father, so he's going to be a few minutes late.
Oh, that's okay.
He had to pick his kids up from school. That's more than fine. I don't see Kevin's entry here to talk about voice over. Kevin's all the way in the back, sitting behind the podium. All right, Kevin, come on up here and tell us what we need to know about voice-over IP.
He's testing the new volume settings on the speakers in the back of the room.
What I did tell them about Social Services, that's report-only in your packet.
Okay, I just wanted to give the board a quick update on where we're at with the voice-over IP program. The physical installation of the wiring is complete throughout the complex. We're in a programming stage. All the equipment has been shipped and it's in. And we're also, on my level, we're looking at strategically how the phone lines are going to come in, what phone lines may disappear within the coming year, because we're trying to be, we're trying to optimize the system. So that's kind of what we're working on right now. That's the phase we're in. Any questions?
Thank you, Kevin.
Great, thank you.
And the next item is airport matters. We've got an opportunity the likes of which the county's not seen in a long time to improve safety at Hummel Airfield, and I'd like to introduce to you all Mr. John McAlmont, who's our engineer extraordinaire, about that.
Something like that, right.
Okay, welcome, or hello. Like you said, my name's John McAlmont. I work for Parish &amp; Partners. We're a transportation consulting firm, but basically what I do is all airports. So I've been working on nothing but airports for the last 18, 19 years. So, you may not remember the name Parish &amp; Partners, but you may remember LPA and some of the others. The group that we work with is that old firm, so we have a lot of history with the airfield from way back when it was being developed. So it's kind of neat to get back involved here. So, what I need, what I was asked to do was basically come in here and give an update on where we are with what's happening at the airport, because we have the initial project we're working on now just from approach lighting equipment, but then that has now turned into runway opportunities and land opportunities and a whole bunch of other stuff. So what this hopefully will do is give a brief update of where we are, where we're going, and then maybe a little bit of an education of why we're looking at certain aspects that we are looking at. So, please, if there's anything that comes in here, please ask questions during it. I tend to use a lot of acronyms, as airport folks, we do that. So if something doesn't make sense, stop me and let me know. So, on this update, we'll first, if it will click. Okay.
Give it one second.
Okay, so a couple of those, the current project we have is install PAPs. That's what was contracted, and we actually have a state grant to move forward with installing PAPs. And what a PAP is, is a Precision Approach Path Indicator, is what that acronym stands for. It helps the pilots come in on a certain approach angle, and I'll explain that a little bit more later on. So, we're removing the old equipment, bringing in new, more recent equipment. Land easement, there's an opportunity that I'm sure you're all well aware of on the north end of the airfield for potential more land easement protection available for that, so we're going to talk about that a little bit. And then the current project that is, has been submitted for a grant request to the state is to evaluate the runway, do a runway evaluation study to consider various alternatives for expansion, rehab, et cetera. And then future development opportunities, I'll go through very quickly just what might be available moving in the future. Try it again.
Try it again, yeah.
So, on the left of the screen is the, is the PAP system. That's what we're looking to put in. So as you can see, the units look a little interesting, but basically what those two boxes that sit off to the left of the runway, they give an indication by way of color to the pilots as they come in, and they're going to come in at a certain approach angle, in this case, three degrees or maybe four degrees. And as you can see in the little colored box, if the pilot is too high, it's both white, and then you can see too low is red. So that's a visual indication of coming in on approach. The right side, the existing approach equipment, is called an Alignment of Elements system. They don't make those anymore and probably haven't for 50 years. It works, but it's not as reliable.
John, did you say 50 years?
It's an exaggeration, but yeah, it's been a long, long time. Yeah.
It was actually 49 years, man.
I didn't know if you said 15 or 50.
The PAP was first designed in the early 80s, so, and before that, you had something else called a VASI, and there's a couple other things. So, regardless, the goal is to get this old equipment out, which is not reliable and not as predictable, and put in new equipment, and we're going to look to putting in an LED-type system to be much more energy-efficient moving forward. So it also simplifies the whole process. So this, this is looking out on the runway 19 end. What I've done here is just pictures to show what it looks like out there, which you can see, if you're sitting on, at the bottom picture, or even the top picture, if you're sitting at the end of the runway and you look out, it's, you see trees in the background. Those trees potentially will be impacting airplanes coming in. So you've all heard, clear the trees when you're coming in on approach to make sure you don't clip the trees, et cetera. This, this is kind of why. So the little picture there on the side is, is a PAP box, which shows how it kind of gives the different colors and reflections and refractions and whatnot. And then off to the right there is the protective zone, so to speak, the obstacle clearance surface of what we try to protect. You can see the number there, four-mile radius. So that four-mile radius is what we have to look at when we're looking to keep this PAP approach clear. As you can imagine, it goes out in pretty good ways, and then it'll go up at either a three-degree or a four-degree angle. Here's some of the information that we kind of look at as far as how to place the PAPs and when they go in and how they go in. As you can see, it has a lot of lines, a lot of different angles and threshold... As you can see, it has a lot of lines, a lot of different angles and threshold crossing heights, et cetera. I showed the picture on the top right, kind of there with larger aircraft. That just says why it's not just one single approach plane, because you have an eyesight plane where the cockpit is, and then depending on how big the aircraft is, it's tailing behind, so it's going to drag a little bit. Because the airplane doesn't come in straight, it comes in kind of flat, almost. So that's why there's these other protective zones that go all around that unit. But can we go back? There's another missing thing here. Just click on the, yeah.
On this?
No, go back to the next one. Hit the projection. And just click on screen.
It clicks over. There's nothing in between the two.
It's underneath it. Yeah. Okay, we'll go back past that. But what I was going to get into was the fact that there's a lot of different slopes, more than just the PAPs three degree or four degree slope to look at. And one of those is the state of Virginia has a 15 to one approach surface that needs to be cleared, so we're going to need to protect for that. The FAA has a 20 to one approach that needs to be cleared, and all these work in different harmony together for various reasons.
John, do you want to try one of your other presentations?
I think it's the system. You know what you could do. So we can, since you got the PowerPoint up here.
Maybe it's wide. Okay.
Okay, so this was supposed to pop in behind it.
But as you can, yeah. So as you can see there, the DOAV is Department of Aviation for Virginia. That's the 15 to one approach. And then FAA, you can see those, and you can see how they relate to the two PAP surfaces. I say two because the top one is the eyesight three degree approach, and then the bottom one is the lowest encore, on-course angle that needs to be protected for the PAPs. That's what's evaluated to keep things clear. This is a cartoon in a way, but it's a depiction of really the 19 end and the other end, because you've got a road that's only a couple hundred feet away. So that road needs to be protected by a 15-foot object that's on top of the road, or that's driving on the road. So as you can see, the FAA's surface would clip that, meaning by FAA standards, it doesn't meet current standards. And then if you go over to the side, that's the trees that are almost 1,000 feet or so out near the house that's just off the end of the runway. You can see the lowest on-course angle of the PAP clips that tree. Now, we've identified those and presented that information to the county so they can look at clearing and topping those trees, but this is how all that plays into B. And the other parts you can kind of see there is the PAP, the orange one and the green one goes into the runway about 300 feet. So it's not right at the end of the runway. It's more where the pilot is physically going to be landing and touching down. So it all plays for various reasons, but this is kind of why the approach slopes are put in the way they are. So in a sense of evaluating where to install the PAPs, because you don't just put them at the end of the runway, you need to put them at a point on the runway to where the pilot can come down, touch down on the runway, leaving a certain height above the threshold. It's called a threshold crossing height, which in this case is 25 feet, is what we use for this one, which is the lowest you really want to go for small aircraft. And by doing that, this depicts that obstacle clearance surface that I showed earlier on. So we tried to identify with little blue dots what trees or other objects are current obstructions to that approach. All those, except for the ones on the far left, are trees. The ones on the far left is the power line. So the power line is going to be much more difficult to do anything about whereby we have to look at other options. So we can look at moving the PAP boxes closer down the runway, but the challenge that that presents is that then shortens the landing distance that the aircraft have. It's already very, very short, and maybe shorter than it should be by standard, which we'll get into later. So then we looked at, well, what if we go to a four-degree approach slope, which is also permitted by standard? So you can see on the runway one end, that got rid of the power lines being an obstruction. So.
We have our infamous pecan tree.
Yes, pecan tree is to be evaluated. This next one shows kind of the idea of what we wanted to go with, or what we're going to propose. And that is, on the 19 end, stay with the standard three-degree approach, because it's standard, it's what people are more used to. And on the one end, go with a four-degree approach, because it's acceptable and still a lot of people are used to a four-degree approach also, and a lot of airports have that. And in this case, it clears the power lines, and all we need to do is look at, what are we going to do with these trees? So that's being coordinated. The county's looking at the ones on the one end, and Mr. Barber's looking at the ones on the north end. So those are in the works of being cleared, and once they are cleared, we'll be able to bid to have contractor come in and put in some PAP units and get rid of the old ones. Okay, so any questions on PAPs? That's very exciting information. So this next one shows grading enhancements. You've probably heard, I know there's been articles in the paper, I know you've heard different things about what enhancements are being done at the airport. You've heard the term runway extension, et cetera, et cetera. There is no runway extension underway, so nothing's being done to extend the runway right now. There are enhancements being done on adjacent properties, which the county is not directly associated with. But that's not a runway extension. So we know Mr. Barber's doing some grading on his property they just purchased on the north end, but that's not technically airport. It's not airport property. However, one thing that the county is looking at is adjusting the lighting, the runway lighting, the edge lighting, because we found that the lights that are installed on the end of runway 19 up on the north end were not put in based on what is current standards. So they will be corrected, in a sense. And then the ones on the one end, they are okay the way they are. It can be interpreted that standards somewhat meet, but it was discussed to look at some opportunities for grading enhancements down there as well. Unfortunately, as you could see by the slopes I showed earlier, because of the airspace, that will preclude any expansion towards the south, because you wouldn't have an approach there. So you'd only gain takeoff distance, so that'd be a challenge to get to. So the enhancements are being looked at. This is the lighting. This basically shows what the standards are, and you can see, this is on the one end, that the bottom picture is the FAA standards. I just wanted to kind of give you an idea that it does basically meet the standards. So we don't need to look at changing any of those right now. When we reevaluate the entire runway lighting way down the road in the future, then we can look at getting these up to what would be, I guess, more of a standard. I know it's kind of weird to say it's almost standard, but with FAA's language, you can interpret the standard certain ways, and we'll interpret this to be accurate. So then this side, the 19 end, it does not meet, because you see on the top picture, there's lights at the end of that pavement. Technically, that's taxiway, based on what the FAA has recorded as the runway length. This runway 119 stops at that white threshold bar right there. And that's kind of depicted, you can see on the bottom picture with the yellow chevrons, the arrowheads. That indicates that beyond that white line is not a runway. So because of that, the lights that are off at the end of the pavement need to be moved back to where they're in line with the threshold. So that's what's being looked at, and it's probably not going to work. So if we just delete that one, it'll show the new standard. Yeah, just delete that. So that, this bottom picture shows what it can look like based on standard.
Or where to go.
Yeah. So as you can see, all that would need to be done is take the existing light fixtures that are there now, take them up, regrade that area to smooth it out, and then move them to the side like Matt's pointing to right there. We need to change the globes on them, little glass globes on top, but that's not really a big issue. So any questions on the lights? I think this is also being looked at from a project to be done soon. This is a very small one. Okay, so moving on then to the easement. So when the county was presented with an opportunity to go under agreement for another easement on the north end of the property, in addition to some of these grading enhancements, et cetera, we found out that there is an existing easement. It's an navigation easement, which basically means that the county has the right of way and the rights to go into the property, clear the trees, trim the trees, whatever needs to be done for a slope from the ground up of a 15 to one slope. This picture off to the right, this is what's been recorded. You can see the date there is 2001. This diagram or the drawing on the right side, I believe that is probably an old version of what might have been a state standard. At the time this was done, I did not find that standard, so I can't say where the shape of that trapezoid came from, but nonetheless, that's what's recorded. So today, that is what the county has, and they can go in and protect and cut trees and trim trees as they please. Mr. Barber has presented the opportunity to come back and have an expanded easement, essentially. So what we did here is we tried to show with the blue, the blue is the current Virginia standard for what an approach surface needs to be protected coming into an airport. So the yellow is what you currently have, and the blue is what needs to be pursued.
Say that again. The blue is what?
The blue is what you would want to move forward to try to get an agreement together with. Like if the county's going to enter an agreement to get an easement with Mr. Barber's property, it should be based on that blue diagram, or the blue boundaries.
That's what the state is asking for.
Yes, that's the current state standard. Right. That's the airspace beyond the end of the runway that the state says, you need this clear in order to have a safe runway, basically. So, and you can see it's very big, and I put down at the bottom how far that goes out over the water. So clearly, this is GIS information from the website, so the property boundaries aren't exact, but it gives a general idea of what might need to be looked at and considered for protection.
John, just for clarification, the blue area that you've depicted on here, that's an area that doesn't have to be cleared all the way to the ground.
Correct.
It has a slope.
It has a slope of 15 foot to one foot.
Okay, so by the time it gets, say, to Eubank Landing Road over here where we had the house that had the airplane.
It's well above that.
It's well above tree line.
Well above that, yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Well above tree line, yes. Yeah. Yeah, the close end is the part that's critical.
Yeah.
And we understand that the trees on this end are being cleared soon anyway, so the ground will be protected. However, it would still be a good idea to take the opportunity and enter into this agreement and get an easement so the county can have future protection of its property. So we'll work with them on that. Any questions on that side?
That's air, that's all air.
Air, correct.
It's not land.
Correct, all air. It starts at that white line we saw before, and from there, it goes up at a 15 to one slope. Goes out 15 feet, up one foot. Okay, so the runway evaluation study. This, I guess, opportunity again was discussed with the state aviation officials sometime last year and earlier this year, and since the opportunity came to look at what can be done to expand or enhance or increase the safety of the existing runway, we need to look at what options are around that. The challenge is, by current classifications, this airport doesn't classify for getting funding from the state, reimbursement funding, more than basically maintenance. So we would have to look at changing the classification of the airport in order to compete, in a sense, for funding reimbursement.
What is its current classification and what would it need to be changed to?
Local service is the current, and GA community is what's going to, and I actually have a couple of slides that are going to hit those points. So we'll get to that very, very soon. Okay, so when we were looking at the expansion, it started by, honestly, they came forward and said, how far can we extend the runway? So based on that question, we could look at extending the existing runway, or what if we realign the runway, and you can get a little bit more length, so to speak, and you also move the approach path of the airplanes over the water instead of over the houses that they go in now. So you, and it increases the usability of the airfield by a lot. And flying in over water, I don't know about anybody else, but I like flying in over water a lot better than flying in over houses. And I'm sure that the owners of the houses like that much more, too.
And it's worthy to note that it runs about waist-deep for a half a mile out.
Yeah, so you can land in there if you needed to. So with all this, it kind of justifies the need to really evaluate the options, because when you look at what is involved with all this, you start getting into coordinating with the state Department of Aviation, you coordinate with the FAA, you coordinate new runway approaches, instrument approaches, a GPS approach, or whatever might be in place. You change the approach plates, which is published information of the airfield. It's all on, you know, published, public information now. All that would need to be changed. And then how much does it cost? So you've got to figure out all that, and there's a lot of factors involved. And then with doing anything on an airfield, it requires environmental coordination. Everybody's very familiar with what environmental coordination takes around here. And if this was a next classification up airport, then we'd probably have to go through a full environmental assessment to evaluate what the impacts are. With it being just state-funded, we may have the opportunity to not go to that level of detail, but that's yet to be determined, so we don't know that. So in order to really find out what are we really looking at, we're going to prepare a study that's going to show and answer all those questions. And then the state requested that we look at, what is it going to take to change the classification of the airport? So how do we go from, like you said, from a local service to a GA community? What does it take? What's going to need to be done? How much is it going to cost? How long is it going to take? Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Yes, Mr.?
Where does regional fit in? Is that one step above what we're talking about as far as?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because West Point, I believe, is regional.
I'm not familiar specifically with them, but I would assume they would be.
And there could conceivably be some competition for that designation, is just what I was looking at.
Yeah, it's based on a number of factors. So, and again, it would be what would need to be looked into, because then you get in, there's a national airport system, it's called the NIPUS, National Plan of Integrated Airport System. And in order to get in that, you're required to be a certain distance from other airports, you have to have a certain number of base aircraft, you have a certain number of operations, there's a lot of classifications that go with that. This airport is not currently in that system, so there'd be a lot of evaluation to consider.
As I look at the runway as a non-pilot, does it have to be parallel with the taxi lane, or is there any way that they could, in looking at realigning it, use the old runway as the taxi? It's hard to look at just getting rid of a functioning.
Right, and when it gets down to the nuts and bolts, I think you're right on. I don't think with as little change in elevation that's out there, there wouldn't be any reason to throw away anything that's usable.
Is there, like, from a pilot's standpoint, if you have runways that look like this, does that create confusion as opposed to the parallel?
By standard, they have to be parallel.
Okay.
Now, if it's a parallel taxiway, that is. Now, if it's a parallel taxiway, that is. If there's another reason that it can't be or has to go around an obstacle, but there is a minimum separation. So there's a minimum distance that the runway can be from the taxiway centerline. So as long as we don't get closer than that, then you can go where you need to go to make it fit the conditions. But generally speaking, they stay pretty parallel.
Don't we also have considerations of stormwater runoff and imperviousness?
Yes.
So we don't want to necessarily keep all blacktop and world out there because we, okay?
Right. And in all reality, it can be very hard to justify a full parallel taxiway. So our focus would be, let's get the runway up to standard, and then we'll work at everything else.
I don't know how to say this without sounding like a smart aleck. Why draw in the taxiway if it's something that's unlikely to be?
Because it's the standard condition. It's a standard configuration based on what we would try to justify, go moving forward with the state. Then it would get into, they would come back and say, "Prove why you would need this. Prove why you need that." And then it gets into a matter of, how much money do you want to spend locally? What's going to compete on a reimbursement project level? There's just a lot of factors. But when you start a process like this, you grab everything you can.
Understood.
And say, "We want to do this. How do we do it?" And that's kind of how we did with the state. We said, "This is our goal. Help us get there." So, so we've looked a little bit there, and then we'll move on. So to answer a lot of the questions that were asked a few minutes ago, this is the current system plan that the state put together not too long ago for identifying the standards associated with the airports. The far left there, there's other highlights. I don't know if they're going to work or not, but yeah, they're not. So, local service, as he mentioned, is where we are today. The state has said, "We need to look at moving to GA community." From that, it's gone.
Nice to show those.
Yeah.
Let's see.
I'm just worried if they're buried on that.
Yeah. So, over there on the right side now, if the airport were to move to be GA community, which would open it up for more funding opportunities, the runway standards would change. Today, being a local service airport, based on the standards and that, the VAC, et cetera, et cetera, it says, "Maintain your existing runway length," and it needs to be 50 feet wide. Existing runway length, generally speaking, of 2,000 feet. That's in the Virginia code. That's not necessarily associated with airplanes. So it's just because it's just not a classified detailed airport. Your existing dimensions are at the top on the right side, 2,000 167 by 45. As you can see, even today, your width is narrower than the state would have it be. Now, the thing that I would say is probably the most critical factor is the airplanes that use the airfield now. A lot of them are operating under a, what you could say, a non-standard condition. Moving into the GA community classification, that's where you use the FAA's guidelines and their criteria for classifying and sizing a runway. And there's charts and all, and how you do that based on how many operations, what type of aircraft, all these factors. But if you boil it all down, the simplest way to look at it is, what's the hottest, what's the average hottest month of the year? You get that temperature, and then you get the elevation. And it's a simple log curve graph. Doing that, you're over 3,000 feet, roughly. So if you look at the aircraft that are using the field, the larger ones, the Twins, like a Baron 421, some other larger aircraft, they need to be operating closer to 3,000 feet to be comfortable. If you're coming in on one of those aircraft that needs more, I mean, some people use the term cowboys, and, you know, but you've got to come, you've got to be really comfortable with what you're doing. Because you're coming in on a short field, and if you have any problems, not a lot of time to react to do anything about it. And that's why if people are coming in and they have bad winds, you have to divert and go around very, very quickly. You don't have the option of, "Let me just see a little bit more. Just hold on a little bit more and then make a decision." Because you don't have much runway to deal with. So by jumping this classification, that gives the airport the opportunity to pursue funding to get it up to standard. We're not expanding anything or increasing the runway to bring in anything bigger or larger or heavier. That's not what we're doing. We're trying to make it standard, meet what the baseline standards require for this type of airport is the goal. And based on the available space, if we can get some additional land, there's room to do that from what we've seen initially.
The air density that you were speaking to is the hottest month, and that relates to how close we are to sea level?
Correct.
Because the higher we are, then the shorter our runway effectively becomes.
Correct. Yep.
30 feet.
So, yeah.
Air elevation is 30.
It is. It's right there at the bottom, but even that bottom curve, because you have pretty hot months. You know, you're in the upper 80s or more for the hottest mean month, average, you know, whatever it picks out to. So, it is one of the lower dimensions for an airport like this, but still, 3,000 feet is kind of the lower side. Just click on 20 on the left there. So, the other thing that we would need to look at and consider in doing this change would be the safety and compliance criteria. And I have it kind of highlighted there for the RSA is runway safety area. RPZ is runway protection zone. And then you've got the approach surface, and then the bottom one is runway object-free area. Those are just fancy terms that the FAA has coined so they can show protected surfaces around the runway. Numbers off to the right show what the standards are and where we would move to. So the top is essentially what we can say is where it is now with the state, Virginia State Code. So as you can see, the runway safety area is 100 feet off the end. And then if we go to the next classification to GA community, it would move to, you need to protect close to 240 feet. So this greatly protects really the community around it. A lot of people tend to believe more that it's protecting the airplanes. But the funny thing is, is the airspaces that are protected on airport protect the community so the airplanes don't come in and hurt you. So they do studies to find out, like, what the RPZs are. They've done studies to find out, where do most crashes happen? Let's identify that boundary and make sure that nobody gets in there. So they came down, or not too long ago, and said, "For an RPZ, they desire the airport to own, in fee simple, the entire runway protection zone. You're not allowed to have any congregating people, can't have any roads, can't have parking lots, can't have any of that stuff. That's protect the public, not protects the airplanes. If the airplane drops out of the sky, can't do anything about it. You just want to protect the space around it. That's the goal." So, in moving forward, these are the protected zones that we will be looking at, essentially enveloping around the runway. I know that's a lot to take in, but basically, the goal is here, you've heard a lot of extension, expansion, there's reasons why and reasons it's been looked at. It's to meet current standards. That's the goal. That's the objective with even this project here. If it's able to move forward and get state funding and become reality, we'd want to get the airport up to where you can say, "We meet current standards." That's what the study's about. So, click on 21 there. I don't think those highlights are.
They're not coming up either.
Okay, so this is an airport layout plan. This is, all airports have an airport layout plan that are prepared. Anytime there's any development that's going to be permitted on an airfield, it's required to have been shown on this document. This document gets vetted by FAA, Department of Aviation in Virginia, and other folks that look at it from an airspace standpoint and from a standard standpoint and safety standpoint, all types of stuff. So in order to get considered for reimbursement, the proposed project or proposed development needs to be shown on this airport layout plan. This plan is typically prepared to show 20-year development, and they say they want it updated at least every 10 years. It's been more than 10 years since this was last updated, I believe. So I just wanted to show a couple of points on this one is the stars. That's the PAPs. That's where the PAPs will be installed. Unfortunately, those are shown. So someone down the line already showed replacing the old equipment with new PAPs. The circle in the middle is T-hangers. Sure you've heard T-hangers in the past not too long ago. Got that paid off now, which is outstanding. Now let's do some more. We start getting some more income coming into the airport and to the county. And there's space and opportunity to have more development there once we get past a couple of other hurdles. The oval down in the bottom left on the airport data tab, that's indicated there because on this document, it shows the classification staying as is. So one thing that we would need to do is update this to reflect, we want to, we'll say, increase the classification of the airfield. And then the other highlight is just showing the date, showing that it's overdue, essentially, for being updated. And I think the state would want this to happen as well to move forward. So, yes, sir.
Just would sort of like to restate for our newest board member and for the members of the public that are present, to reemphasize the fact that we are bringing, trying to bring this airport into standards. We're trying to make it safer for what it's already doing, to not be attracting Lear jets and all sorts of other, because it's still not large enough to do any of that with.
No.
And you mentioned the hangers, now that they are paid for, since, if state funding comes through, that can be on an 80/20, 80% from the state and 20% from the locality. And we now have income free and clear from the hangers that exist that could go towards a long-term note, thereby alleviating citizens' concern over taxes and so on and so forth. Those are just the possibilities.
Right.
Department of Aviation, Jamie and I went to the meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we're tentatively in line for a grant to cover the feasibility study, and that's the first step. So I just wanted to put that in layman's terms for some of the rest of us.
The state doesn't fund the hangers construction?
They don't, not the hangar itself.
They'll do.
You can go out a little bit past the building and do site work and paving.
They'll do site work, but they don't pay, they don't reimburse 80/20 for the hangar itself.
And realignment does fall within the maintenance and so on, not new construction that qualifies for the state funding?
That would be a tricky situation.
Okay.
So that's why, that's part of the evaluation will help identify what that is.
We want to trick that in our favor if we can.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
Anybody have any questions, John? What's the 22nd slide?
That's the property map. It's just, again, a couple of these are up here in case there were questions and in case I might have had a pointer that worked. But this is your current airport property map. It's, again, another one of the documents that's prepared and required to be a part of your owning an airport and being a sponsor, because the county has signed into certain airport sponsor certifications. There's a lot of information with that, but part of that shows that you're going to do your best, essentially, to protect the interest of the public using the airport. So this is just another document that needs to be looked at and updated. And it shows with the hatch out there, it shows on the north end, you can see on the top of the page, it's already been indicated that that's future potential property transfer, we'll say. If you don't know what that means, is it acquisition or easement or whatever it might be, but it's been shown. So essentially, you're free and clear to move forward in that direction without having to jump another hurdle for that.
What is the bottom line? After you, we get the 20/80 split and leave our taxiway where it was and make the connections, the lowest cost to us, including engineering and all the different costs?
I wish I had that answer.
I do, too.
That's what he's going to say.
Yeah. This is, I think we're, I could throw out some numbers based on other projects and stuff, but with this one, real hesitant to throw out any numbers because there's so many variables. Because there's a lot of different ways this thing can go. And if it stays to where, say, we can extend the existing alignment a little bit, that's one cost. Maybe we have to realign it. Maybe that's another cost. Maybe there's portions of that we can do or some combination thereof. And then it's also going to depend on the environmental requirements, which we're going to look at as a part of the study. But based on what the classification of the airport is and where the funding's coming from, there's different environmental requirements. Do we have to follow NIPA requirements, or can we just check some boxes and move forward? I wish I had an answer, but I don't.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
John, thank you for a very thorough.
Sir.
Presentation, and as the representative of the board to the airport committee, it's a pleasure working with you.
Likewise. Appreciate it.
All right. Has Dr. Pete made it in yet? I don't think so. So let me see here. Do we have Ken Pollak here to talk to us on Bay Transit? We do.
You may recall, in January, I came and updated you on the second bus operating in Middlesex County. We are in the second year of our pilot project that was funded through, fully funded through a grant from the River Counties Community Foundation. That is the final year that runs through federal fiscal year 18. We are now, I'm now applying for a follow-up grant for the next two years for partial funding of the second bus and have requested from the county the other partial funding for the second bus for the next two years going forward. So I've asked for a resolution of support for our application to the River Counties Community Foundation. I think it makes a stronger application when they see that there's the partnership going on between the county and Bay Transit and the foundation. So I'm just simply here to answer any questions. I think they have, the resolution is there. I don't know.
Page 56 in your package.
So I was just coming to answer any questions you may have and ask for your consideration for the resolution to support the application for the funding for the second bus.
I cannot believe it was a grant or something that was for the first two years, and we knew when we said this that we would be facing this issue of funding at this particular point in time. So I don't think that comes as a surprise to anybody, and I think that possibly the chair would entertain a motion to approve the resolution as it is laid out on page 56 of your board package.
I move that we approve the resolution as it's laid out on page 56 of the board package.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
The move properly made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the resolution?
We want to fill in where it says Harvey Village.
Yeah, we'll fix that.
Okay.
We'll fix that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So ordered. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, sir. That was easy. Appreciate it.
Come back and bring us some money next time.
I'll try.
All righty. I guess we'll leave Dr. Gretz's spot open, and we'll move on to a resolution that has been written up for, in memory of Jack Miller. And we had no idea that we would be able to seat a new supervisor as quickly as we did, so we've got to redo the resolution for a fifth signature. We only had the four. So Madam County Attorney, if you would be so kind as to read the resolution.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So it's on your board package, page 57 in the administration. So, it's on your board packet, page 57, and the county administrators pointed it up for you now. It reads, "Whereas the Honorable John D. Jack Miller, Jr., departed this life on February 19, 2018, and whereas Mr. Miller was first elected to the Middlesex County Board of Supervisors in November of 1995 to represent the Saluda District, and whereas Mr. Miller continued to faithfully serve the citizens of the Saluda District and later the Harmony Village District until his death, and whereas Mr. Miller served on as many, excuse me, served on many local and regional boards and commissions and represented the county and board as legislative liaison for many years, and whereas Mr. Miller's steadfast loyalty to the citizens of Middlesex County, his ability to ask the tough questions, his artful use of wit and humor, and his dedication to the job made him a respected local government leader throughout the region and throughout Commonwealth of Virginia. Now be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Middlesex County that it be made fully known to all those who shall follow to wit that while the County of Middlesex, Board of Supervisors, the citizens of Harmony Village Election District, the staff and employees of the local government, and all those relatives and friends will surely mourn Mr. Miller's legacy of leadership, public service, and dedication will inspire others for future generations. May the county be so privileged to find another civic-minded leader to step forward and fill the emptiness created by his death."
Thank you, Madam County Attorney.
You're welcome, Mr. Chairman.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve this resolution with the addition of Kathy's fifth signature on the bottom of it.
Seconded.
Motion and duly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may, as a citizen of Harmony Village, I'm glad that the board has prepared this resolution, and I also think as citizens that we're appreciative of the sacrifices that Mr. Miller's family made so that he could serve. And I want to say that I am honored to fill his shoes and will do my best to represent the citizens of Harmony Village.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's see, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So ordered. Thank you very much. And we move on to county attorney updates, and I can't remember what you had.
Mr. Chairman, just briefly, I just wanted to let the board know that I did file, as required by the code, the petition and the writ for the special election. So, that's waiting for the judge's review, and once he's signed the writ for the special election, I'll have a copy for the board. I believe he's seating tomorrow, but I don't know that he'll be able to review it tomorrow.
And just for the public's edification, we had 45 days from the date of Jack's death to seat somebody in his position. Otherwise, the court system would do that for us. So, feel very fortunate that we've been able to take care of that, take care of that business. And thank you for the testimony of that writ.
You're welcome, Mr. Jim.
All righty. I guess we're through with all of the short-winded meeting. We'll move into the county administrators' report.
I'll try to be short-winded as well, Mr. Chairman. In your packet and on the screen, you instructed the county attorney and myself to draft transit occupancy tax. These are remarkably easy to draft because there are a number of bases of comparison around the state that we can launch from. We kind of gravitated on to the one from Akimak County, I believe, that seemed to have all the language that we were looking for and met state code, of course, and has the supporting forms and documents that the Commissioner of Revenue's Office and the Treasurer's Office will use, of course, if it is implemented. It is in your packet, and it's up to the board if you want to move forward with public hearing and when you may want to do so.
I think it's my understanding is it would be wise to move forward with public hearing. We need to do it if we're going to levy the tax in two weeks prior to next April meeting would be the sensible timing. I think...
You have a couple of options that you're available to the board. We had a couple of work sessions, tentative work sessions in March that are not being used. You have the work session on the 20th, of course, that's being used to discuss and hear presentations on the land use program. But, you also have the meeting or tentative budget work sessions on March 13th and March 27th, should the board wish to elect to have a public hearing on the 27th. I think we can meet the advertisement deadlines and meet that one. And then, of course, you can have a public hearing on April the 3rd, or really any time after that, if you wanted to have it on a special evening.
From a logistical standpoint, in case we, if we were to pick this thing out and then run into a hiccup, how does staff feel? When would, when do you think it would be advisable to have a public hearing on this?
I would see no reason you couldn't have it on the April 3rd meeting.
I like keeping it on a regular board meeting if we can. I think for the public's benefit, that would be better.
And there's still adequate time between the April 3rd board meeting and July 1, which I would presume would be the implementation date for us to work out any nuances that came to light at the public hearing or address any board concerns as a result of public comment and/or implement the new ordinance if it was going to affect.
Do we send this to a public hearing by consensus or vote? Consensus is fine?
Consensus is fine.
Lady and gentle people, by consensus, we take this to
April 3rd makes sense to me.
Public hearing on April 3rd. Yeah. Will this include any other items similar to this?
At this point in time, we have some preliminary review of the B-Pole ordinance that will be commencing. Nothing that we have for the board to afford tonight. And it's my understanding as of right now, this would be the only one going to public hearing in April. If we have anything further to report on that, we can report that out on the 20th and still meet advertisement deadlines to make the 3rd.
So, we would still have time from the 20th to the 3rd?
Absolutely. For instance, if the board did want to make some change to the B-Pole ordinance, we would have time to meet those advertisement requirements in order to have another public hearing on the 3rd. It may be a little rushed trying to get draft language done over the month of March, but we can look at that.
Wouldn't it be wise to wait till the 20th and we know all the things that we want to talk about?
By some measure, you could do that. One of the things I think worth considering is presumably if you adopt any ordinance change to another ordinance like B-Pole, you would have April, May, and June to adopt such an ordinance before it would feasibly theoretically go into effect on July 1 with a new fiscal year. So, you have an abundance of time.
Okay. So, we're good for April 3rd?
Yes.
Very good.
Gentlemen and ladies of the board, I have passed out a budget calendar that has been updated to reflect the most recent discussions the board has had. And of course, as I mentioned previously, the budget work session to be held on March 20th. The purpose of that work session is for the board to receive a presentation from the Virginia Tech Extension Service, specifically Gordon Gruber, on the land use program and associated SLIAC values or the valuation method developed by Virginia Tech. They're going to be presenting a very similar presentation to the one that they presented in North Hampton County in 2016 to brief their board a little bit more on the processes and the program. On the, at the conclusion of that presentation, the board will receive another presentation from the Farm Bureau, more from an advocacy point of view, advocating why you would want to have one. Mr. Bill Latney from King William County, it's my understanding, will be coming to do that presentation. As we mentioned this morning, and for our new member who was not present this morning, this is a budget work session, so you can treat it as such. Of course, the main purpose is to entertain the presentations from the aforementioned agencies, but you could also treat it as a budget work session and get into other discussions if you desire and needs be. I just wanted to make sure we disclosed that, and we'll be sending notice to the media. And any public that's welcome to attend the work sessions, welcome to do so.
I'd say we go with, as a public meeting, a public work session.
Well, all of our work sessions are public, so they're public meetings.
Yeah. But, I think we ought to treat it as a public works, work session. Is that what you're saying? All meetings are?
Well, again, all work sessions of the board on the budget are public work sessions. The public is invited to all of them. They're not closed sessions.
And the 20th obviously is, then?
Absolutely. And any other work session we have on our calendar. One of the reasons we prepare the calendar is so when you adopt it, the public knows when the board's intending to meet.
Does that conclude? Could. You've got Water Authority,odr Ban, Emergency Services.
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding the question.
Does that conclude your comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Yes, I'm sorry.
That was the part that you didn't understand.
Yeah. That was all I had, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. And let's see, Jim, are you going to tap dance if Dr. Pete doesn't get here? I'm just teasing you. We've got a couple more things we can do for you, you need to do anything. I just wanted you to be prepared if we called on you.
Yeah, I can call him and see if he's going to make it. How about I?
Okay.
I can confirm that he is a new father. My wife has held the baby. You don't get any more confirmation than that.
Item eight is unfinished and new business, and I guess we'll open with unfinished business. We've got the issue of the elevator.
Yes, sir. I have one item from staff, and that is we do need to give Gil Ensminger, the consultant engineer and architect, a little bit of guidance on what the board's intentions and desires are on the elevator project. If you are, if you recall, you entertained a presentation from Mr. Ensminger last month, and I think he kind of took it under advisement for a month, and staff would like to know how to direct him.
Gentle people?
I guess I'll go first. I have no desire to come up with the funding for an elevator project at all, zero.
And I would like to speak to that also. I have no desire to come up with the funding for the elevator. Also, there are other ways of doing it than putting in an elevator, and I would like to have it removed. Like to have it removed? From any further discussion until it's brought up totally as a new item.
Jesse? By being on the board, you know, and this being an aging community, and you've got to look at the ADA Act and different people in wheelchairs and different things like that, you've got to look at that, too. I was just saying that in the past, we had constituents concerned. A lot of times, if you're in a wheelchair, you want to be independent. You don't want people to come down to you. You want to be able to come up there and talk to them. And, you know, I'm just knowing about what has been in the past. And I guess you would have to put yourself in, a person in that situation, that, you know, you're in a wheelchair or you have a problem with your knees, et cetera, you know. And I'm just, I'm just saying that, you know, this was something that was looked into, and we looked at it, and we wanted to say which way we want to go. As I see right now, I don't think the votes are there, but I was just saying that it's sad for elderly and handicapped people where, you know, if you have to come upstairs to conduct business, they're just going to have to, I guess, you know, have to do it another way. But, you know, a lot of times, people want to be independent. And I could say, I know I'm not in a wheelchair, I'm blessed, but, you know, you've got to understand the people that are in a wheelchair or somebody with knee, bad knees, elderly people. I know we got an elevator here, you know, for people that having a hard time to get around or being mobile, but, you know, if you look at it saying, hey, find another way, you know, but I know under the old code, you can do that. But, I feel like we've got to look at our constituents as we move down in the future as for the elderly and handicapped. That's my case.
Kathy, would you like to weigh in?
I would. I am coming in in the middle of this, so I don't have all the information, but I do think it's important for our government, local government, I need to be sure that we're treating all citizens with dignity. And so, with that as the overarching goal, I just would like to keep that in front of us. I do know just a little bit that this is a very expensive project, and I think I would be interested in a mechanism where the question of meeting the needs and in a dignified way of all of our citizens could be addressed. Maybe this expensive elevator is not the only solution. So, that's it.
I'd like to sort of echo Mr. Jesse's comments, because until we were faced with this budget shortfall this year, and we were faced with how expensive this thing really is, I've been 110% in favor of it, because I've got a neighbor who is a paraplegic and is, has to be in one of those electric wheelchairs, and there isn't anything but an elevator that would get him up to the second floor to do business. And it is demeaning when you've got to sit out in the hallway or move somebody out of their office in order to have people come downstairs. No, I left that upstairs, let me go back up and get it. This year, I have to agree, is not the year to do it. I wish we could do it. We've just got too many challenges to get our salaries in place, to get our health insurance squared away. That's the only reason I'm not pushing hard for it. So, for that reason, I would like to contemplate letting Gil know that we are, we're not pushing this all the way off, but it's sort of on low heat back burner. And hopefully, next budget year, we might have some room to be able to do something. But, I do feel that we've studied the escalators, the elevators, and we've got a couple of options on the size, location, and weight-bearing capacity, as was presented last month, but we don't have too many other options, and I don't see anything but an elevator answering the needs that our aging community needs. Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. If I may, I did see, or I was shown, a room in the bottom of this building where we could move planning and zoning if we wished, which is the reason... The largest user of, would be the largest user of the elevator. More citizens coming to visit them and everybody else. Absolutely. And all we're doing is storing records in that room. It would be an awfully lot cheaper, and I would like, before we go any further, to start with a new review of our needs versus our costs. Is that something, once we get through this budget crunch, that staff can look at? My first question comes, where do we put those records? Because I've seen them, and it's a bunch of them. I don't know. If we displaced them?
We have our history books and our Red Cross cards in the room, and voting machines as well. I think we've heard a consensus kind of galvanized around the subject. We can put the matter on hold until maybe the fall or winter of next year.
I don't want to see it go away.
Revisit some different options and see what we got. But, we can definitely tell Gil that it's not going away completely, but it's on hold indefinitely unless we get back with them.
That said, Matt does do an incredible job finding money in budget season, so maybe he can come up with a half million dollars.
Have to do my Charlie Cully imitation on that one. Hands on my head, my head down.
All right. Is there any other unfinished business from supervisors? In that case, we'll look for new business from supervisors. Hearing none?
I'm not sure if this is new business. Matt, maybe you can direct me on the dog.
It could be either. It could be your comments or new business, if you want to.
If you want action, you would do it under new business.
I'll hold it for my comments.
Hold your comments, okay? Thank you for the explanation. Mr. Go for it.
I apologize. I couldn't reach him, so I hope nothing seriously had happened. I would like to share with you, though, one thing. Tonight, we're having a meeting at the high school in the auditorium at 6:00 for parents and community to discuss school safety. In this day and time, we've got a lot of concerns. It even came up at budget time. So, anybody, it is open to the public, and I hope you will be able to attend if possible. Any questions?
Yes, your formal policy. What do you have with the cell phone policy? Because I know the incident that happened last week, and I'm just, I'm curious, what's going to be in place with cell phones in classrooms?
Yeah. The board will review that. At present time, they can have cell phones at the high school. Teachers will take if they feel it's interfering with instruction. But, look, at what's happened in these schools, kids reach out when there is a problem, and that's, I guess, what's going to... there is a problem, and, and that's, I guess, what's gonna, you know, the way it's gonna be. You, you name me a kid at the high school that doesn't have a cellphone nowadays.
Well, it's not the issue of, of not having a cellphone, but I'm just saying, I don't know if there's anything that you could set up where, you know, when you come in the classroom, you have some type of little sectional thing that you set your phone in-
Okay.
-and then, you know, with your name on it or something, and they don't have access to their phones until they leave the classroom. Because I, I think if, the situation which you know, that we know about that happened, where you had parents getting excited, coming to the school, getting their kids, and if, if there was, anybody was in imminent danger, they would have ended up locking the school down, you couldn't come get your kids, and the administration never had a chance to get out to the parents of, of what really happened, when nothing really happened. It was really, at no time-
It was a rumor.
-any child or anybody at that school was in danger. But, these cell phones went off everywhere, and parents would come and get their clo- their children, and then half the kids were out of school, and, and, you know, well, you know what happened.
Oh, yeah.
And then, I'm, I'm hearing things that the parents are getting upset because they didn't know anything about it and all this kind of stuff like that, looking after the, the school system when, you know, there was never danger, never any danger.
Well, this day with social media, yes, and there were a number of rumors even after the fact that we're trying to deal with now, so.
Right, right.
Okay? Anything else?
Thank you, sir. Please do the best to, to, to the new daddy. All righty then, moving down to number nine, supervisor comments and reports. For the benefit of Kathy, our new supervisor, I'm gonna make her, I'm gonna let her be in the last spot so that you can see what all of us talk about and what we do, and see if there's something that you want to talk about, and if there isn't, we understand, because half a day on the job, most of us have been doing it for at least a month.
Thanks.
I'll start all the way over here with Pete.
I have none.
I attended the Orson Festival Foundation meeting. There will have upcoming events, we have the cocktail boat races that are coming up. Also, on, in March, we're also gonna have a board retreat, which is gonna be in Abana, for about three hours, starting at 5:00 PM on March the 8th. Also attended the PDC, and from the General Assembly, they showed the video of Jack Miller's, well, I guess-
Keith Hodges.
Keith Hodges, Keith Hodges presented a resolution for Jack Miller, and he did that at the General Assembly. They showed that video, and they had a moment's out for Jack Miller on that.
And it's worth noting that, that Jack held his seat on the board with an artificial heart.
Right, right.
And Keith made the statement that it proves that politicians don't have a heart.
Right, right. And, and that was for my committee reports.
Thank you. John?
So, on February 7th, I had the, my first regional jail board meeting. The big takeaway for me and Matt, among many other things, but the big takeaway was the importance of using a five-year average on, on making estimates of inmates and costs associated with running the jail. February 13th, Joint Budget Finance Committee, and I think a very productive Middlesex County Public School budget presentation. I was really pleased with, with how our, our two boards worked together through that, and I think we've, we've made a lot of progress there.
And it's worth noting that that was Jack Miller's brainchild. Joint Budget-
That's a great point. February 14th, Middlesex Foundation Board Meeting, we discussed the vibrant communications pre-application, which I've learned we've been shortlisted for.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're making some progress on the economic development front there. And February 21st, Broadband Authority Meeting, I became the chair of the Broadband Authority in that meeting, learning a great deal about broadband, and I'll have to continue to do so at a rapid pace, and have been soliciting the public for people with technical aptitude and interest in, in serving on that board. I'll speak for myself, I could use the help coming up to speed with what technologies are available and cost-effective for a rural community such as ours. February 23rd, I attended the EDA meeting, just to see what that looked like, and there were no real surprises there. I did get my first tour of the county with the county administrator in what's known as a LARQ. We went and we looked at the dredging spoils, we looked at public beaches, public access to, to the beaches, we looked at some property line issues, we looked at any number of things, and if, I'm sure each of you have had similar LARQs with Matt, but it's, I would recommend it highly if you get a chance to have him give you the tour of the county from the perspective of a former planner and a current administrator, it's, there's a lot in that head over there, for sure. Also been feeling constituent thoughts, complaints, concerns, ranging from overhanging trees to biting dogs to taxes, but I, I'm happy to report that the basin Hartfield is, is very much communicating to me, and I encourage the public to continue to do that. Coming up this week, Career Day at the high school, March 8th. I've encouraged a number of local businesses to participate and, and see what all that money we're spending on all those kids' steak or hamburgers. They are coming out as good food products, in my estimation, and we should be trying to employ them here locally, and I'm supportive of that. And then on March 9th, I'm presenting at the elementary school. They are also having a career day, and they've asked me to present on careers in solar power, so I will be doing that. In closing, I have a couple thoughts that I do want to share, just so that you all know where I'm at coming into the April meeting next, next month. I do want to look at the YMCA funding and, and how we're doing that, and make sure that we're, we've talked about it to the point where we can make a decision. I do want us to talk about lowering the boat tax right now. Stafford, Fairfax, Prince William, Caroline, Richmond, Lancaster, Gloucester, and I can never say this right, Pecoson essentially have 0% personal property tax on boats over five tons, Chesapeake is at nine cents, Isle of Wight 32, James City and Portsmouth 50, Northumberland 72, Hampton 80, Middlesex 98. So you can see, there's a lot of waterfront communities around here that are beating our, beating the boats out of us, taking them out of our county, so I, I am gonna be talking about that. I want to take a moment and thank our staff and our administration. This is, I'm learning, a very, very busy time for the board of supervisors and our administration, and I commend you for the long hours that I know you're putting in. Some of you are calling me at late hours, and that's how I know. Public beaches, I, I think, you know, I've been frequenting them myself, and I think it'd be nice if we considered putting in some permanent grills, so that people could prepare food at the public beach. I understand there's some reasons why we might not consider that, but I'd like to put that in the back of everybody's head. I also want to respond to my constituent, John Galloway's comments in the public comment section. I would like to get a public hearing for having a dog ordinance added for the Cove's at Wilton's Creek. Admittedly, I am only tepidly supportive myself in that I have two senile 13-year-old dogs that can't see or really hear, and, but I think he's got a great point, inside of a small community like that, if it is the will of those people in that community to have more stringent ordinance in place, I think it's appropriate, and he's gathered over 30 signatures in a community that only has 46 single-family homes, over half of which are only part-time residents, so that's what the Cove's wants to do, and I would ask the board to consider supporting us and, and changing that. Also, I had a constituent come and volunteer to participate on some level if the Middlesex High School were to form a sailing team, so I'm continuing to keep my hands in on that. And finally, Wilton Creek Road resident across Wilton Creek from, from where I'm at in the Cove's approached me about us talking with VDOT, about having VDOT take over Wilton Creek Road. They're just, it, it needs maintenance that they aren't really interested in taking care of as a HOA, and so they're looking into what's called a rural rustic program through VDOT, and I'm gonna help them step through that. More to come as, as we step through that, and if there's a decision for the board, I'll get it in front of the administration.
Thank you, sir. If I could comment to one of your comments, I would be happy to go with you, but Bob and I found it very helpful to do what we call the windshield tour. We went across the river, those marinas, Lancaster, on this side of, of the bay, we went all the way down to what, Hampton?
Yes, sir.
And took inventory of these marinas in and out of the town to see what their, what their health was, and, and it's very, it's very odd. Not to, anyway.
I was just, sorry, but I-
You're gonna get-
We actually flew drone footage over all of our marinas, and I have that ready in the can for the next meeting when I-
How about the ones that are-
I'll get them for you.
Okay.
Just if you'll consider maybe softening your position.
My position's always been soft, it's just a matter of where we're gonna get the money from. We've had, we're talking about if, if we lower the real estate to the real estate tax, possibly the cost of an elevator. So that's just putting it in terms that we can all just kind of, you know, kind of look at.
You're like, I just saved you the cost of an elevator.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to, on Mr. Kuntz, are you asking for the dog ordinance proposal to be sent to public hearing?
Yes, please.
Okay, so that's something that we need, the consensus of the board? I don't know if you're-
I'm asking the board for consensus on whether we can send a dog ordinance to public hearing.
You asked me about it just one-on-one, and I told you that any, any self-contained neighborhood that had its own codes and covenants, that wanted to inflict this on themselves certainly could, in my opinion, should be able to do so. Subsequent to that, I've been made aware of some of the difficulties in enforcement, and that would be having a witness who's willing to testify that this dog was running loose after the dog warden has been, and I'm just saying, I'm not, I want to be careful about what we're stepping into, because we might be getting into something. I just don't know a lot of neighbors that would go to court and testify against their other neighbor.
You don't know the Cove's.
Okay. This is a little bit out of order, but we do have one citizen that wants to comment.
I will testify, sir.
You will testify, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think Mr. Galloway mentioned this earlier, the draft that is in front of the board and was in your packet, I'd prepared it Mr. Kuntz's request, it is almost ver- well, it's verbatim for Piancanteak Shores, the existing ordinance of Piancanteak Shores. Of course, the language has been changed and modified to reflect Cove's of Wilton Creek. The one thing it is lacking to, tonight, that it would have at a public hearing, should the board move forward with a public hearing, is the needed deed book references. Staff did not have time to go over to the courthouse and do the research needed on the deed book references that specify the subdivision lots, in a sense, what constitutes the Cove's of Wilton Creek subdivision. Other than that, it's in, it's precisely what Piancanteak Shores is animal running along.
Well, I stand by my position, if the, if the neighbors want to inflict this on themselves, and it's not taking into account people's hunting dogs out in the woods during deer season and all that sort of thing, then I'm, I would ask then if we have a consensus to send this to public hearing next, next meeting?
I, I certainly go along with, with the hearing.
We have a consensus to send this to public hearing at the next regular monthly meeting?
Okay. What makes that happen?
All right, I'm gonna try to be short with this.
Sorry, I, I- Just one last thing.
Okay.
You had mentioned that reducing the boat tax would be about an elevator cost. It's 163,511 if we were at 62 cents on, instead of 98.
Taking into account going up?
Yeah. Just to be on the record.
That was at seven cents, wasn't it?
No, that's at six. At seven, it goes to 158,969, roughly.
You know, my point was, we're looking for revenues and-
Point taken.
Okay, I attended my first rural caucus in Richmond this past month. Pete and I went to the Chairs Institute so that I could get educated on how to be, how to do my job, and Pete could do my job if I don't have to be around. So, rest assured, we're adequately trained, whether we do what we're trained to do or not is another thing. And as John reported, we did have a joint finance committee meeting with the schools, which was very, very beneficial, and I'm sorry, Dr. Pete's not here, but he has made dealing with school financial issues a very, very reasonable exercise, and I appreciate the way he works with the county. Now, having heard all the things, and everybody's gotta say, you've been on the job now, what, six hours?
Not even.
We really want to know what you-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to say, I, again, I'm really honored to be here, I'm honored to be part of this board, I have great respect for the work you do, and for the work that our professional staff does, and I'm really very grateful to be part of the county and, and the governing board for the county. I, I am looking forward to learning a great deal about the county, and learning more about the issues, and representing people of Harmony Village, and I encourage people, citizens of Harmony Village to communicate with me. I'll be sure that I have some good contact information available to you, and I look forward to representing your concerns and trying to solve problems as, as in, as a, as much of a consensus as that we can possibly find. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, and once again, welcome to the board, and I think your first day's going very well.
So far.
Is there any other business to come before the March meeting of the Middlesex County Board of Supervisors? If not, the board will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Recession.
Mr. Chairman, sir.
Well, I said a recess, I saw recess, and I thought it was a misprint.
Until the next-
Because you're gonna have a work session on the 20th.
Right, okay. Correction, that would be a recess until the work session on the 20th. So, may, exactly. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign, so ordered. Thank you.